Okay. I think we start with Father Tony.
Absolutely. All right. Well, great. Well, welcome everyone. Welcome to this webinar as I think so few people are still signing in. So as they're doing that, why don't we begin with prayer? It's the best place to begin. In the name of the Father, Son, the Holy Spirit, Amen. Heavenly Father, we give glory and praise to you always, my God. We thank you for another day of life. We thank you, Lord, for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us. Thank you for this parish of St. Robert Newmanster and all the great blessings that you've bestowed upon us each and every day. Ask you, Lord, as we dialogue, as we discuss, as we share, as we present, we pray, oh, Lord, that we do all these things as we discern your will, not ours, but your will for our community. So, Lord, fill us all with greater wisdom, knowledge, fill us with your grace and your love as we continue to seek in the Kingdom of Heaven. And as always, we ask our Holy Mother, our Lady of Perpetual Help to intercede and pray for us as we pray together. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou among women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for us sinners, now and at the hour of our death, amen. Our Lady, our Lady of Perpetual Help, pray for us. St. Robert Newmanster, pray for us. In the name of the Father, and of the sound of the Holy Spirit, amen. All right. Well, great. Well, again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us on this Zoom call, a little bit different than we had over the weekend, but that's all right. So I presume that you all received my letter that was a little delayed, but out there in the mail. So there were some frustrations around it, but we got that letter out. But here you are, just so we can just share some great information with you about our parish going forward. So just to be clear, just wanted to say, you know, that this format, this little Zoom meeting is, is not about what we're going to be doing it in the sanctuary or with the altar platform. You'll be hearing from myself and the finance council about that later that later this month. So but that's not what we're, what this presentation is about. This presentation today is to share with you plans, the needs and design objectives behind the facility expansion as they lay out what we believe to be the practical way to continue to investigate these plans and determine our ability and interest for funding before we make any, any final decisions. So I just want to share with you as your pastor, just a vision, my vision, my hopes for St. Robert Newmanster Parish. As I've been your pastor here now for just a little over a year, and my hope, my hope for St. Roberts is this, that this entire community will continue to go deeper in communion with Christ and be transformed by his love and humility. I mean, that's who we are as church. That really is my hope for this community to enter more deeply into this relationship with Christ. My vision, my vision for St. Roberts is that we create disciples of Christ in order to be reflection, a witness of Christ out into the community of Ada and beyond. That's our role here, our purpose at church, create disciples. That's the mission of the church, the salvation of souls. So that's my hope and mission for our community. When Bishop Okovek set me down a year ago, over a year ago, assigning me here to St. Roberts, St. Roberts was probably the last place on my mind that I'd be attending as my next assignment. But here we are. Praise the Lord. It's great. And he's first of all, I said, yes, of course, to go to lead the good people, lead them to the kingdom, to be that example of faith, absolutely. But also he asked me to help in the transition with the school that we have here that's been around for now almost five years and to help with that transition, to help with the transition of for to becoming a parish school. And I said, Bishop, of course, absolutely. I'm a project Catholic education. I believe in Catholic education. Happy to do that for you. You better believe it. And so with that, as we talk more about that, when I've come to St. Roberts, I realized that this was the largest parish in the diocese of Grand Rapids. And just looking at this parish, I mean, it's a big campus. It's a massive campus. But as I look around and all the wonderful things that are happening here at St. Roberts Ministries and so forth, we find that we're limited on space. I was actually surprised by that, very surprised, just given the scope of this campus. And so that's what we want to share with you today. This is what we want to talk about with you today. And so it's not only me and my vision. I've had, I've got a big group of individuals who are here on with us on this committee to help us as we talk to you today. I just want to introduce who they are. Some of them are here online, but the committee that we've been working with are El Mores, Amy Chambers, Tom Dewey, Jen DeWolfe, Nick Donzilla, Patrick Droste, Renee Von Dwyer, Jean Cat, Barb Mathie, Mark Morrow, Mike Rugary, Anne Marie Schreiber, and Ted Wright. So these great individuals, we've been working and dialoguing for the past a few weeks and months is, you know, to come and to present you this information about not only our school, but also our facility at large, our parish here of St. Roberts. So with that, I would like to introduce Liz Peters, our principal at the school, just to come and share a few words about the latest what's going on at our school.
Thanks, Father. Thanks, everyone, for being here. First off, I wanted to just let you know kind of how I became to be part of the school. I was hired as a principal in December of 2017, and that was right, it was during Christmas break. And in January of 2018, I started at the school. At that time, I was working with Father Len and Peter Baldwin and our trustees on a vision for the school and opening the school and some renovations that need to happen. And, you know, and honestly, this school is such a beautiful gift to us, to our parish. And recruitment began with my talking about the school, doing open houses, going out to community events, meeting the people at our parish, lots of informational meetings, and through that, we began, you know, we began to grow. We started enrolling students. We began as a preschool through kindergarten school. And that was again in fall of 2018, and we had 45 students in our school at that time. And of those, 15 of our original students, 33% are still with us, and they have lots of brothers and sisters who have also joined our school with us. So as we grow, we have, we have had some good growth. We had some steady growth during COVID of the five years now, and we're in our fifth year. We've been open, three of them were COVID years. And so, you know, there was a little bit of a slowdown during that time, but this past year, we welcomed 30% more students into our building. We are now a preschool through fifth grade, and we have 106 students currently in our school. The chart you see right now is showing a projected growth of where our school could be over the next several years if enrollment were to remain at the same steady pace that we have been at. And this is a very conservative model for that. And as we get older students, our parents and students are hoping that we're going to be able to have a full-size, a multipurpose space, which would include spaces for sports and other activities. That we would have a STEM lab, and STEM is the science, technology, engineering, and math that we use as our model for teaching and learning at St. Robert. Then we would have dedicated art and music space, dedicated library and media center, and also some resource rooms so that we can serve students from all populations. And so something very special and spiritual is happening at St. Robert Catholic School. We're a Catholic school with a STEM focus, and we are surrounded by Spanish immersion schools and Chinese immersion schools. And I like to say that St. Robert is a Catholic immersion school, and I honestly can't think of any better immersion that you would want to be besides our Catholic immersion. We are bringing children who are our future to the church, to God, and helping them grow in their faith. And our school families are at church and are very active in the parish. So just for an example, we start every morning of school in church, and we go into the church. The children are learning to come in and pray before, you know, we get started. We, you know, have the pledge of allegiance. We do the Catholic pledge. Our second graders right now are reading the intentions that we are reading each morning, and our students are also doing a lot of the readings at Mass on Thursday when we have school mass. We are also focusing on teaching our Catholic virtues. And so we are, you know, spending a few minutes talking about that virtue and just helping the kids understand the importance of virtuous life. We do have a handful of families that come to school, who've come to our school and return to the church. You know, we have, and we've got some older students who are getting baptized because their families have returned to the church because they came in and found that St. Robert Catholic School was a place that their family and their needs. And of course, combined with the parishes, with what we're doing here, we're working alongside an amazing faith formation program and the opportunity to be the center of our Catholic Christian formation in the Ada area. And I'm excited for the parish and for our school to be expanding our campus because this is really going to make our school and our parish full of this expansion. And so at this time, I'm going to let Terry talk a little more about faith formation. I'll pass the mic on to you.
Thanks, Liz. Thanks, Liz. Like Father Tony and Liz, I'm excited about the possibilities that our St. Robert of Newmanster faith community is growing, not only in size, but also in vitality and vibrancy. We're blessed to have such an active and growing faith community with faith formation and the school and to be able to pass on our Catholic faith, our Catholic traditions to our children and future generations. We have a wonderful parish administrative staff, and I always have to brag about our faith formation team because they're awesome. They do great work in planning and coordinating activities for our parishioners of all ages to grow and engage in their living Catholic faith. I'm grateful to all of our parishioners and parents who are actively involved and vitally important to the life of our parish community. As a representative of faith formation and the parish community, I've been part of the facility planning process since the beginning. And I remember when Father Len first came into my office and he closed the door, and he told me that there were some investors who wanted to bring a Catholic school to the east side of the diocese, and they were looking at St. Roberts as the facility because we have all this space. And I thought, no way, you know, we, Forest Hills Public Schools, it's a great school system. Catholic school isn't going to fly here. We don't have the space. And I wrote out all of the activities that we have going on with all of our ages of faith formation. And actually, the investors were quite impressed with how we were utilizing our space. And really, when I started 10 years ago, we were already out of space. We only had eight, I think, eight to 10 classrooms, and they're not normal-sized classrooms. They're very small, so they could only seat 15 to 18 people. So, so we really have been out of space for a long time. One thing with the space that we have now is we do share, faith formation and the school shares classroom space. So we're sharing activities. So school is using those rooms during the day, and faith formation is using them in the evenings and on the weekends. And I think that's important for everybody to understand that it's not just school space, it's shared space. So for faith formation, when I started and since I've been here 10 years, we've had to offer multiple sessions to accommodate all of our disciples in grades one through 12. We can't accommodate everyone all at the same time. We currently have 522 disciples in nursery through grade 12. We have 96 disciples who are preparing for first communion and first reconciliation this year. We have 76 confirmation candidates, and we have over 200 adults participating in adult faith formation with Bible studies, prayer groups, in faith activities. So we do use all of the rooms onsite, and as I mentioned, we do share space with, with the school. On Sundays, we have our little disciples. On Mondays and Tuesdays, we have our junior disciples, which is elementary grade one through five. On Sunday afternoons, we have young disciples, that's grades six, seven, and eight. And the sixth and seventh grade meet one week, and the eighth grade meets the next week. We have to alternate sessions because we don't have the space to accommodate all of the students, all of the disciples. And then our teen disciples, our high school disciples, meet on Sunday nights in the Parish Life Center. For adult faith formation, we have Going Deeper in Faith for Women on Monday mornings. We have Tuesday, Sunday Scriptures Reflection in, in room 202. We have Growing on Wednesday. We have Growing in Faith Bible Study, a Wednesday, Women's Bible Study. The Moms Group meets once a month on Wednesday mornings in the Parish Life Center. On Thursdays, we have Silent Prayer Group and our EARN group. And there, there are little groups that meet. We have a Moms in Prayer that meets on Thursdays, the EARN, which is the Employment Network. They meet on Thursdays. And then also, once a month on Thursdays, we have the Choice Wine in the evening, and then That Man Is You on Friday, Owls on Fridays. So the building is used. It's really being used. And with our room accommodations, Newmanster Hall, just standing, we can have 350 people in, so that's no tables or chairs. With tables and chairs, we can seat 225 in Newmanster Hall. In the Parish Life Center, with chairs alone, we can seat 360. But with chairs and tables, our fire code is 165. So we do have a need for additional space. A few, a couple of weeks ago, we had a weekend where the, the young disciples were, they had their confirmation kickoff in the Parish Life Center. So they were set up in the Parish Life Center, but we also had Ministry Spotlight and Coffee and Donuts on Sunday morning after the masses in Newmanster Hall. Immediately following that, we had a first reconciliation parent-child retreat. And then immediately following that, we had a young disciples' parent conversation. So from each activity in Newmanster Hall, we were kind of cleaning up and setting up all at the same time. So we were kind of bumping elbows with each other. So if we had additional space, it wouldn't really be advantageous to have multiple activities at the same time. It can be, you know, as someone who works with the parish schedule, the parish calendar and spaces, it can be pretty tricky to schedule everything that we want to do because we just, we are limited in what we have. So the need for additional space doesn't just affect the school, it affects the entire parish. We also have a library that is currently packed up, and that's why that Airheart trailer is out in the back parking lot because the school needed space, so that we packed up the, the library. But there are plans for bringing it back in the Marian Chapel, which we'll get to in just a moment on those plans. So, so the library is coming back eventually, hopefully. Also, as Liz said, the school has been beneficial to our parish community. We have older children, children being baptized. Over the last few months, we've had more older children being baptized because their families are coming back to church because they've seen what St. Robert's School is able to offer, and they're enrolling their kids in the school. So we've had those older children being baptized because their, their parents are seeing the value of a Catholic education and participation in a Catholic community. Also, I don't know if you've noticed, but especially during the nine and 11 o'clock masses, have you noticed that there's a little more white noise with all the little ones in the back? And that's because we're drawing in more young families. And so it just, some people are kind of annoyed by the white noise, but quite honestly, I love it because it means we are alive and we are growing and we are vibrant. So so we have good things going on. But now we have a wonderful opportunity as a parish community to make the next large investment in the future of the Catholic community, to bring Christianity, to bring Christ into the Ada area. And I was on a class yesterday with the Augustine Institute, and they were talking about the benefits of the Second Vatican Council and just kind of the themes of the Second Vatican Council. And one of the themes was the universal call to holiness, how we are all called to grow in holiness. And the presenter said that everything that we do as a parish community, as a Catholic school community, must be ordered to grow in holiness. So and I, I see this opportunity as, as a way for us to continue to grow in holiness because we will be able to bring in more people. We will be able to grow our community. We will be able to offer more faith formation activities, family activities with both school and parish. So we do have a wonderful opportunity in store for us. Father Tony?
All right. Very good, Terry. Thank you. And Liz, thank you. Wonderful. Excellent. Yeah, great presentation. I mean, this is so true. This is why we're here. This is why we are church to lead souls to Christ. And it's great to see that we've got new families coming in, how that's impacting our community and rights. Terry, I agree with you. I enjoy the white noise. That's, it's beautiful. It does show the life of this parish, which is awesome, which is great. And I just have to share with all of you. I mean, it's good to hear that. It's good to see that there's growth. I'm in conversation with my brother priest from the diocese, and for some of them, they're struggling. They're actually not growing. They're going backwards, which is unfortunate, and just, they're just making some tough decisions as they're trying to deal with the decline. But we see here at St. Roberts, you know, that's, that's not the case, which is incredible. So very, very blessed to be here and for us to continue to expand the Lord's Kingdom here in Ada, Michigan, so we can impact more lives and lead more souls to the Kingdom of Heaven. This is who we are as church. This is why we're here. So we've also been in the last year or so, been talking with Peter Baldwin and his folks over at AMDG Architects, you know, just to help us to brainstorm what we could do, what are some possibilities, some options, and things like that for us. If we were to decide to go down this process, what would that look like? And so I'd like to just invite Peter to come on and just to share a few things with us to give you a little bit more clarity about what we're talking about. Peter?
Thank you, Father. I assume everybody can hear me. Okay. Seeing some nodding, and everybody, I assume, is looking at the screen. You guys can see the screen. Okay, good. Just checking. All right. As we start, I wanted to start actually with a timeline, and I wanted to talk just a little bit about how we got where we are today. And then we're going to jump right into the master plan work. As Liz and Terry had mentioned, this process has been ongoing for a while, starting with feasibility and then some initial work and renovations. I wanted to highlight in July of 2020, Father Len called a meeting, and he got several of us together, Terry, Liz, myself, Mike Lowen from the diocese. There was a group of us. And he said, I want, I really think it's time to, I think Dave Faber was there too, superintendent schools. It's time to do some big picture thinking and some comprehensive planning for the future and the growth of St. Roberts, both the school and the parish. And he, he said specifically, I remember him saying, I really would like to do this work before I leave. And I think it's important for me to be a part of this and not have it be fall kind of really in the burden of the next priest. And he also said to us, he said, I also think that the Marian Chapel, I've been thinking a lot about that, and we renovated part of it already for offices. I would like to study that because I think that could be a good space to renovate for additional ministry needs, formation needs, classrooms, multipurpose for the parish. And so that I just wanted to highlight that, obviously, we did do engaged in work in '21. We've revised some of the work in '22, particularly around budgets. We are going to share budgets at the end. So with no further ado, we'll get going on the master planning. I wanted to just very briefly, AMDG is an architectural firm, interiors design firm, and landscape site planning firm. And we are located in Grand Rapids. And you can see we have a cadre of people. And I just want to highlight that Alice in the middle is not really an employee, but we like putting her in our graphics. We are a firm that has worked a lot with Catholic churches and schools, faith-based schools. And we really enjoy that work. You can see on the left, if you can, I don't know if you guys can read that. I would assume you can on your screens. So you can see some of the firms, some of the parishes and schools in the diocese. We're currently working actually on about 13 either educational or faith-based or church projects in six states. So we do have a background in this, and we do enjoy the work we get to do with ministries and groups like yourself. And, and a lot of the work is trying to figure out how you serve all the different needs of the parish and school, and really thinking about flexibility and use in a different way than if it were a standalone church or a standalone school. This is an aerial view of your site plan. Your existing building is shown there in kind of what I would call yellow in the middle. And you have about 465 plus spaces. The rectory was built. There's a maintenance building, a small maintenance building, and you have about 83,000, almost 84,000 square feet space, which I think to a lot of people's view is a lot of space until you start breaking down all the things you use it for, including your sanctuary space that seats over 1,300 people, which is one of the larger ones. This is, and as Father Tony mentioned, we looked at a lot of different options. We studied different ways about potentially growing. And we ended up, and this is our proposed master plan project. You can see on the bottom left is some proposed additional parking. And the top right, you can see some additional parking. That's because we're proposing to build an expanded, expand the building, build school, activity center right in the heart of that to the north as an extension of the existing school. You can see on the bottom right-hand corner, we are recommending and proposing to renovate the Marian Chapel, and we can show you the details of those expansions and renovations. This is a slide. I'm going to keep going unless somebody interrupts, and you can, you don't have to chat or anything. You can just put your microphone off mute, and you can interrupt me if you want to. But otherwise, I'll keep going. So on the left is the Marian Chapel. That's the existing floor plan. And you can see the, the renovation that was done previously to build in some office space to the top or north. And on the right, you can see the proposed renovation. We would fill in the floor just like that was done when the office renovation was done, so that'd be all on one floor. It wouldn't slope anymore. And then we would be building in a very flexible meeting classroom space. It could be for large classes, or it could be divided up into four separate classes. And you can kind of see there's roughly about 24 to 25 people tables and chairs per room. There's about 35 to almost 40 chairs. So if you combine those spaces, you can have tables and chairs for over 50, and you can have people in just chairs for plus 70. There's a, we are preserving this shrine and actually expanding it. There would be two additional office spaces, new bathrooms, additional storage, and the library or the things that are currently in the Airheart trailer that Terry talked about would find their home at the end there in the space, library, which actually would have still the beautiful skylight that I think at one point was over the sanctuary. So that's the proposal. This is just showing you the upper level of the second floor, the existing second floor. And Father Len had said, I think the Marian Chapel is almost the same amount of space. And so then when we actually programmed and laid it over, we were really quite impressed with his architectural prowess. I don't think they've got a lot of that in seminary. But you can just see that it's kind of a one-for-one translation of space, but we think the proposal is actually gives us even more flexibility. Um Terry and the team were very involved in this. And um if I asked Terry to, she would, I think, tell you more things about how she would use that space, and was very, very um happy with it and excited about the prospects of it. This is the um proposed expansion to the north. This is a drawing that shows all three floors of proposals. So the on the left is the main level. The existing rectory is at the top. And at the bottom is the existing Family Life Center. You can see off to the right a little bit, and then also the existing classroom space here. I don't know. Can you guys see my pointer if I do this? Can you see that? Okay, that's probably helpful. So this would be a new main entry. Uh obviously, safety today in uh schools is paramount. We have to think in about it often. And um so this would be best practice. We certainly, we would, we have security consultants we work with. We would have the right types of glass and safety, but everybody would have to check in through the school. Um it would shut down um and only have one point of entry during school and things like that. So main entry, opportunity to kind of create a very nice new welcoming experience. And then to the left would be new kindergarten classes, the art room, the music, some of the things that Liz was itemizing as spaces that would be really, really um kind of complete the full suite of learning spaces that typical school has. And right in the heart of it is is what we're calling the Activity Center. Obviously, it would function as gym and many other functions that we'll show you a little later, um lockers and storage to the top. So in existing classrooms alone. So if you move then to the right, you can see the extension of the second floor that would go straight over. Uh right in the middle, we would have a media center, library. Um and I sprinkled throughout uh the second and third floor are actually smaller spaces for uh resources, educational support, pullouts, mentoring, um a sanctuary room and and kind of different types of learning spaces as well as learning commons along that way here and here, which would um just allow for more twenty-first century learning and uh learning both inside and outside the classroom. You can see as well, we're proposing additional classroom classes. Um the STEM studio or flex lab space would be at the end of the second floor. Um that's over a thousand square feet, for example, so a very nice flexible space and views down actually into the Activity Center. As a last component of the master plan, we are proposing a third floor, which would allow us to build out the full uh complement of a school that could grow it to at least uh to as high as two sections per grade. And so you can see the labeling there of the highest grades to seventh grade to eighth grade, again, a learning commons, etc. Uh this master plan would allow you to finish that later if you didn't want to build it out right away, which would kind of echo the work I uh that Saint Roberts did earlier when they built the two-story educational wing and did not build out originally the the second floor and did that later. So that's part of the the master planning sequence, or at least it would give you the flexibility to do that. These are just some larger plans. I'm not gonna belabor the point, but this does grow the total number of classrooms in the um school. Uh there currently are uh ten on the first and second floor. And this proposal would grow to up to twenty-three classroom spaces. And then again, like I said, a suite of other additional support spaces um that would allow this school to really flourish and and be really um best practice in both its kind of curriculum, pedagogy, and physical space. This gives you a high-level just view of the entire campus. Um we would be proposing to add about forty-five thousand square feet to the there's eighty-three thousand in the building plus seven thousand in the rectory, so you have about ninety thousand right now. So this would grow uh if you built up the third floor fully to a hundred and thirty-five thousand total square feet. This is an image that shows you the Activity Center, and it just shows you some of the flexibility and some of the different uses, everything from a competition, middle school, um basketball and volleyball court um that has been, we did a fair amount of benchmarking in the Diocese in terms of kind of middle school courts and sizes and seating. This is um about three hundred bleacher seats. And uh you can see the stage. There's additional storage. You would have a concession in kitchen area too, to allow food access to that, do funeral luncheons, banquets. Um you know, uh at the bottom left, you can see there's performances or large gatherings. That's showing a bleachers and chairs of seven eighty. You can actually fill that up even more and go to eight hundred plus. Uh we were presenting in the Newman's Hall uh for the Town Hall on Saturday and Sunday. And I believe this space is about a hundred and fifty percent or more um of that space. If I remember right, I can't remember. Terry or Liz, Terry, you know the numbers, I think, a little better in Newman's Hall in terms of like, I think that seats, tables and chairs like two hundred to two hundred and twenty?
Yeah, about two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five, and then in terms of seating of just chairs in that space, was it three fifty or something?
I think around three hundred.
Three hundred, yeah. So you can see this gives you a lot more flexibility and obviously larger numbers. Um and that the other thing about this space is it is zoned or sequenced so that it could be a standalone space that you're using where you don't have to have access to the rest of the school or the parish. This is a three-dimensional overview, just to give you a little taste of of kind of what's happening in the third dimension. This is a rendering of the STEM lab and also shows you some views into the learning commons and and how we extend learning out. And so we get um really different kinds of learning opportunities as well as really good passive supervision from an educational instructional perspective. This is a view of the architecture. There's a couple of things in mind. One is a large canopy for kind of protection and drop-off and clarity of entry. Uh on the right, you can kind of see the opportunity through the glass to to do some very nice Catholic branding and some beautiful imagery. So we talked about that. And then I think the third thing was just that we thought the architecture of the building should flow and look and take its cues from the existing um architecture, so the bricks and the metals and things like that. This is the moment of truth to see if our video works, Liz. Okay? It's probably because Liz is doing this tonight. It looks like I'm driving, but really Liz is doing this. So this just gives you a little overview. Rectory in place, extension uh and proposed addition. This gives you a little different feel because it's right on ground level. You can see the air hurt trailer with the current books. And then this is just gonna bring you up into the front entry. So again, just a little taste of kind of some of the ideas. You can see very clear sense of entry and view in. Okay, so what does it cost? We did some costing. Uh we've been working with Airheart Construction. We've been working with the Diocese and Liz on AV and technology. We've been looking at furniture. We've been looking at these. So this is a very comprehensive budget. Includes um right around ten percent contingency. And it has been factored up and escalated uh for inflation to fall of twenty-two. So these are current costs. Um the Marion Chapel with all of those in costs is about one point six five million. The building expansion is another seventeen point four five. And so the total cost of all of the work would be um just hovering above nineteen million. If you, um some people have asked, well, what does it cost to finish out the third floor? And that's about three quarters of a million dollars or seven hundred and fifty thousand. So you could take that off of the nineteen one. The other question is, what if you didn't build the third floor? And we're not necessarily proposing that. We're just saying you would have the flexibility to do that. That would take uh and I I I tighten my numbers a little bit from our presentation last time. That would take about two point three five million dollars um off of the nineteen one, which would get you just um to about sixteen million and three quarters. So um I don't know if you can hear, but my family is kind of, can you hear my family in the background? Oh, okay. I I can't because they're kind of gearing up. It's post-dinner and they're having fun. So that's a good thing. All right, um so those are the costs, obviously significant. Um we're renovating over seven thousand square feet and we're building forty-five thousand square feet of new. And then obviously, we have the site construction costs as well built into that. All right, I'm gonna turn it back over, and I'll just keep clicking. But now I think we're gonna talk about impacts for Saint Robert.
So with the expanded classroom and gathering space, we will, um with the Marion Chapel renovation, we will be able to have dedicated, easily accessed space for adult faith formation sessions without any impact on the school. So currently, we're using um the Parish Life Center Meeting Room. And we're also using um Room two oh two, which is in the second floor hallway. Um and so that means unlocking doors to allow those adults into to that access those areas. Well, and every time a door is unlocked in the school, there's there's access. Um which hopefully doesn't lead to any dangerous situations, but the possibility is there. So if we have the Marion Chapel, um people, adults will be able to come indoor A. There is already a ramp in place outside door A, so it's easily accessed. Um they'll just be able to come in and have have that adult faith formation space there in the Marion Chapel. Um also, we will be able to offer multiple faith formation programs at the same time to make family schedules easier. So rather than having, you know, the young disciples come at one time and junior disciples at another, um we we likely will have the room to be able to offer all of those sessions at the same time. So um families won't be driving back and forth. Liz, do you want to talk about the um parish and school gatherings?
Sure, yes, thank you. So one of the things that we noticed our very first year um at the school, we were um helped our Christmas program in the Parish Life Center. And as people were pouring in, um you know, Father Len looked around, he went, this is a lot of people, right? Next year, we're gonna have to move upstairs. And then the next year, and because they were singing and everything in that space. The next year, we held our Christmas program in the Marion Chapel, and everyone flowed into Newman's Hall for cocoa and cookies. And the next morning, Father Len said, oh, I think we were over fire code. We gotta, you know, we gotta watch that. Well, the the next couple of years, we didn't have a program at school because of COVID, but then now we can't, we don't have a place where we can gather, especially with a hundred and six students, all of our school families and our students to celebrate um a holiday. And so we would, you know, if we had a bigger space, we'd be able to do that. We could actually in a in that Activity Center, we could have our Christmas program and cookies and cocoa all in the same space. And so, you know, having um a place like that would be really wonderful for for the the school community. And then then when we want to gather as a um parish and school, it offers a lot of opportunity as well.
Also, in that um Parish Activity Center space, we can host large gatherings. Um so last year, we had the CAFA Men's Conference at Saint Roberts, and it's planned for March eighteenth at Saint Roberts this coming year, twenty twenty-three. So we could host large gas gatherings like the men's conference and women's conferences and family conferences and other large gatherings. Um so so that Parish Activity Center would allow us to do a lot of good things. Um we could have multiple events at the same time with the Parish Life Center and Newman's Hall and the additional classroom and the Parish Activity Center. We could have multiple events at the same time, which would ease parish scheduling.
And then, of course, having a beautiful new Activity Center facilities um can only help and increase school enrollment enrollment. Um because we'll be able to do so much more um with our with our school families and and offer just so many other programs um within that, within the school.
And as the school draws more families um to the community, we'll have more people participating in the parish.
All right, well, great. Well, wonderful, excellent ladies. Thank you. So yeah, then uh potential next steps. Uh I think Nick, uh you got this section. Is that correct?
Yes, so as Father Tony, and and by the way, I'm Nick Donzilla. I'm a uh I've had the pleasure of being on the school board as the chair for the past three or four years. Uh my wife and I have two kids at Saint Robert um with the third that will be there next year. So our current is in second grade kindergarten, and we're not sure where our third will be next year, but he'll be at Saint Robert, like it or not. Um and um this is really exciting, not just as a parent, but my wife and I got married at Saint Robert. My parents got married at Saint Robert. And so when we talk about the church growing and looking as at this project as something not just to fill the churches and the schools' needs for now, but into the future decades from now, I kind of feel like I'm living proof of that, that this is a project that can benefit that people like myself um for years and years to come, when people were planning for Saint Robert years and years before I came around. So I am very excited for this opportunity for the parish and school. Um we've talked about how the the school got off the ground. We're in year five, and now we are in the feasibility study uh phase of this project to talk to parishioners and present this idea uh to people in the parish and to get feedback. Um what do you perceive the needs of the parish to be? Um what do you perceive the needs of the school to be? And to get information, I don't think anything that Liz or Terry or Peter has presented today is necessarily chiseled in stone. That's why we're having these conversations. Um but the goal, if uh we get enough feedback from the parish and that feedback is positive, is to then uh do the campaign starting next year in twenty twenty-three, hopefully break grounds the following year in twenty twenty-four and open up the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year with a brand-new facility that um Peter presented today. And it will, you know, we're trying to get all this information out to the parishes as quickly as we can, but not necessarily in a hurriedly fashion because we wanted to make sure we'd done our research and put together a a presentation that um hopefully would maybe answer questions, but uh inspire some dialogue as to how this can all work and work together between the parish and school. Um I guess it can't be emphasized enough that um and Terry, I I think hit it right on the head is, you know, the parish's needs for a larger facility were maxed out even before the school came around. And the parish has been nothing but um accommodating and a blessing to the school in terms of bringing making space to to get the school going, to get students in here. And as a parent, it's just been amazing. Um the I maybe, I don't want to say it goes without saying that my kids are getting an excellent education because they are. But um you know, yesterday, my daughter brought home a a rosary and a little pamphlet on how to pray the rosary in second grade. And I thought, that's amazing. You know, that's just something that I I went to Catholic school my whole life and uh I don't remember doing that in second grade. But to have that foundation, that knowledge, that early on, I think, is a true testament to the growth and commitment the school has to a a Catholic education and what that benefit will yield for the parish in years to come as um you know, maybe my kids will go to college and move far away from me, and I don't blame them. That's an option, but uh you know, maybe they'll stick around in Grand Rapids. And if they do, maybe they want to go to Saint Robert because they had an awesome experience here. And now we have parishioners for years and years, decades, and and in this Forest Hills Cascade area where there's uh people coming and going for jobs or whatever reason. I don't know the statistics, maybe Father Tony does, but there's a fair amount of overturn and turnover in the parish that I don't know, maybe doesn't always have to be the case with a school here and parents and their kids at Mass every Sunday or Saturday, and then those kids stick around and they get their kids into Saint Robert School. Um which I don't think is a unrealistic or unreasonable belief. I I mean, IHM, Saint Thomas, Saint uh Saint Paul's, those schools have been around for fifty and sixty years. It works. And uh Saint Robert was the first new Catholic school in the Diocese of Grand Rapids in over fifty years. It works. And St. Robert was the first new Catholic school in the Diocese of Grand Rapids in over 50 years. And we have an awesome opportunity to build something like that, that, you know, maybe 50, 60 years from now, we can say we were part of that.
All right, great, Nick. Thanks. Thank you. To all the presenters, well done. Excellent. So at this time, we do want to open it up for, for questions.
Father?
Oops, I'm sorry, yes.
I just wondered, Mark, did you want to talk about, from a cost standpoint, the match from the trustees in donors' perspective? Because we didn't mention that in the presentation.
Yeah, Nick, I wonder, do you want to cover that, the next step of the funding plan? Yes, absolutely. The trustees, who have already been extremely generous in their efforts to get the school renovated to its current form, are still extremely committed to the school. And seeing this project through, provided that it is something that the parish would like to embrace as well. But of that 19.1 million, the trustees or the founders have made a commitment to match dollar for dollar, essentially half of the cost of the project. And so the feasibility study, as Mark Morrow of the Breton Group is leading that, is to present this to the parish in these town hall meetings. We're going to conduct a feasibility study in which we'll interview dozens of parishioners about this, but to see not only what they think about how the school and parish can grow together, but maybe what kind of financial commitment these parishioners are willing to make, or maybe what the parish in general is willing to make for this project. So it, it is still a tremendous commitment that the trustees have made and are willing to continue to make in terms of a, essentially a 50% commitment to this project. And we, we understand that the number is, is large, but there's a big financial commitment, in theory, that's, that's already been made. All right. Yeah, Father Tony, if you'd like to add to that, feel free.
All right, yeah, I just, I just think that, that's great. That's right, just a very generous of the trustees. And so of coming forward, yeah, they're not just going to just walk away, but they do want to see the school to thrive and be successful. And they, they do want to partner with us, which is a good thing. All right, excellent. Well done. Thank you, everyone. So we do want to just open it up if you have questions, comments. Terry, what's your best way to do this for our questions or comments?
We could have people, oh, go, sorry, Terry.
Yeah, if you have a question, you can just unmute yourself or you can put it in the chat. Sorry, Nick.
I have a question.
Sure.
Ready?
We are.
Okay. Agatha Van Heren, longtime parishioner, and my kids have gone through marriages there, confirmation, et cetera. I was a CCD teacher a long time ago. I'm in my late 60s. The question that I have in listening to the presentations, and I appreciate all of the feedback, is that you, you've talked about how this is really a forum for discussion. To me, it sounds more like a done deal, not a gathering of information. What's your response to that? So that's the first thing. Secondly, you also mentioned what, that you talk about the financial parish commitment and parishioner commitment in terms of finances. So to me, that also infers that this is a done deal. You're not, you're not gathering information. You're saying, this is sort of what we're going to do. So we're really going to look at gathering finances from the community. That leads to the other question, what if you don't get the parishioner commitment? What's your backup plan?
Good. Agatha, great questions. So kind of three of them there.
I got a lot more, but I'm going to stop there.
Okay, well, we're happy to hear you out in entirety. Terry, would you like to maybe tackle the first couple of those about kind of what the scope of this is? And in my quick two cents in response to this is, and I know Mark Morrow may want to chime in, who's helping lead the feasibility study, which is that it is exactly that. This is not a done deal. It is a, a conversation. It's a dialogue that we are starting to test the parish's interest in expanding the parish's footprint on the premises, but also with that, a growing school and what that may look like. But, you know, Terry, who is very familiar with the facilities and the needs of the parish, may have some comments as well.
Do you understand that whenever you, the conversation seems to be about the growing parish and the needs of the growing parish, but it keeps going back to the growing school? And so for me, when I hear that it, it, what's inferred a lot is the growing school, not just the needs of the parish. And those are two separate issues. And so what it sounds like, it is we need a bigger school. So let's, let's blend that in with, we also need more space, which we've always needed. So I'm somewhat, and I, I want to be careful how I state it, because I certainly don't want to insult anyone, but it sounds like we're not, you're not presenting clearly what your agenda is, as I hear it. If you need a school, then say you need a school, and this is what you're going to be fundraising for.
Agatha, yes, we need a school. We need to expand the school. I mean, when the school started, it was going to be preschool through grade eight. Right now, we have through grade five. In order to accommodate through grade eight, we do need more space. That being said, as I mentioned earlier, when I started for faith formation activities and other parish activities, we didn't, we were already limited on space. So at the same time that we need more school space, we will be able to allow the parish to offer more faith formation programs and other activities. So they do kind of go hand in hand. Our, our parish has been growing since the beginning, since its foundation in 1951. And, and we continue to grow because the Forest Hills Cascade area is growing. And so if people see that we have a vibrant school that feeds into our vibrant parish community, people are going to say, okay, what's happening at St. Roberts? And they're going to want to come check us out. So the school and the parish really are one. So yes, we need more school space, but it will enhance our parish community as well.
So you're fundraising for both?
For both, yes. Absolutely, absolutely.
What happens if you don't get the funds?
Then we go back to the drawing board. You know, this, this is a dream. This is our hope that we'll be able to offer this, that we'll be able to accommodate this plan. I know Peter has done a great amount of work, working with the trustees, working with Liz and I and Father Tony and Father Len. And, you know, and all the way through this, it's, what could this be? What could this become? So that's what this plan is. This is what we could become at St. Roberts. Not just the school, but also the, the whole community.
Uh huh. Okay. Well, I appreciate your answers, and I'll have, obviously, I don't want to take up more time because there's other people I'm sure having a lot of thoughts and questions, so.
And, and Agatha, and anyone, if you have questions that aren't answered here, you can email them to me. And we are collecting, on, on Saturday and Sunday, we did collect cards and notes with additional questions. So, so we will go through those and answer those, and they will be posted on the parish website. So if you have questions that aren't answered here, please, you can either email them to me at tburns@strobertchurch.org, and we'll get those questions answered.
Thank you. Thank you. Because I think it's imperative that we, we become completely transparent as you're doing. Because there will be other things coming up that are other things, you know, I, I don't know what else is coming up in, in terms of needs.
Yeah, we don't know the future. We don't know the future.
Well, I think we sort of do. We have, we, we have an aging church. There are, I don't know, roofs, there are this, there are that. And then what's coming, what's coming up after I commit to this project?
Right.
It's going to come up in six months. And so as a parishioner, I'd like to know that.
And Father Tony, you answered that question this weekend really beautifully. You know, we keep asking for money.
Right, right, exactly. Yeah, that's, it comes up, you know, always, you know, there's this, there's that, and so forth. And so really, you know, our, our call as Christians is, we're just an ongoing, we, ongoing, we continue to give of time, talent, and treasures. You know, we follow our Lord or God each and every day for the rest of our life. It's not just for five years or 10 years, but we're always called to serve our Lord. And part of that is, is that we must always continue to give of our resources, our time, our talents, and our treasure. And so this is what we're called to do, is just continue to contribute. I know money's a big thing, a, a, a big challenge for our, our community, but ideally, if we could all get to that method of tithing, we hear that number 10%, and I hope you've heard my homies about the analogy of, of the rosary, a decade of the rosary, that if we were to tithe 10%, 5% to St. Roberts, 1% to the diocese, CSA, you've got 4% to tithe to other charities of your choosing. If every family at St. Roberts, if we could get them to tithe 5% to our community, you know, I don't even know if we'd ever have to do another fundraising or capital campaign. Why? Because there's that always that giving, and we're called to give continuously as we are, as Catholics, Christians, continue to, to serve our Lord as we build this kingdom right here in Ada, Michigan.
I appreciate that sentiment. I appreciate the, the thinking behind that. The difficulty with, with that is that, once you put that statement out there, it is an impossible task for a lot of people, even within the St. Robert community, to do that. Not everybody's in that place financially, emotionally, and otherwise. So while I appreciate that sentiment coming from you, not always a statement that I can agree with. Personally, I'm able to do that, might be able to do more. However, got to be careful with that, because not everybody can do that and then feels pressured. So I,
Oh gosh, yeah, we don't want to.
I would love to have that conversation with you some other time. You and I might be able to meet. Not a good time to do that, but thank you for that.
You're welcome. So Peter, Peter, there was a question about parking. How will we accommodate parking, especially for large events and Christmas mass?
Yeah, so the master plan at the moment is parking space neutral. It doesn't take and it doesn't add. It displaces. So you have about 465 parking spaces on site, and so we'll be maintaining that. We understand that at Christmas, that's probably the pressure point in Easter. And other times during the year, it's probably not. Your sanctuary seats about 1,335 people. The parking requirement for zoning is 445, so you have a little bit more buffer than that. But we understand zoning requirements and true need are different. But in this case, it's really not adding to it, but it's not subtracting. So it'd be similar to what you have now, which typically, actually, when we design completely new facilities, there's a saying, to never design the church for Christmas or Easter, that you typically don't overpark a project for those few times that it's very full. It does cause some stress at those points, but the rest of the time, the facility works really well. And then you haven't invested in overparking for a few days a year. So that's, that's kind of at least the, the conventional wisdom on, on kind of parking and why your 465 is probably a pretty good number for probably 363 or two days of the year.
I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So the extension to the building goes off towards the rectory. Little bit of a, a design freak here, so bear with me. But why didn't the extension go off to the far east and go up along the wooded area there? And then it would open up between the rectory and the church and, and the school land on a big courtyard in the middle. Why didn't we think of that?
Okay, that's a design question. I feel like that's for me, Tom. You know, interestingly, we did look at that. And when we did the original feasibility of the school, I think Liz might remember this, and Terry, we actually had a concept that looked at that. As we developed and we looked at different concepts, what we found is that actually displaced the dry, it was very difficult to work that existing drive. And, and we were having challenges with the parking to work. But primarily, we ended up landing where it did because of its relationship to the existing school, because we, we felt like, and, and the ability to enter on both sides. And we also, as we went through this final design, we, what we believe is right-size that activity center gym space, because the original concepts were smaller. So it really, it was a study we did, and we ended up believing that this one we're proposing now is, is a better fit.
Liz, there is a question.
I'm sure that's very dissatisfying, Tom, because I'm not showing you the drawing, which I don't have right now, because I bet you have a vision of it. And, and so I'm sorry that I don't have a drawing to show you, but I, I understand, I think, what you were talking about.
I appreciate your answer, and I'll take you at your word.
Thanks, Tom. Liz, Dr. Drosty had a question about parishes that contribute to St. Roberts. And I know that the second part of that, St. Roberts, so we have, because St. Robert's School only goes through fifth grade, we do have a lot of students who are going to St. Paul the Apostle, Immaculate Heart of Mary, St. Thomas, St. Patrick's, and Parnell. And so parishes do, so St. Roberts, for those students, I think it's 1,500. Is that right, Liz?
It is. So it's 1,500 per year, per student who, who attends a Catholic school. And so currently, St. Robert is considered a parish without a Catholic school. So although we also, St. Robert's School benefits from that $1,500 per student, and that's kindergarten through eighth grade, we, St. Robert also spends, pays that same $1,500 per student to St. Pat's and Parnell, St. Paul's, St. Thomas, IHM. If, it is, if we become a parish school, or when that happens according to what the bishop has requested, that we would no longer be paying that to those other schools. They, that would only be money that would go to the St. Robert students. That makes sense to everybody.
Any other questions? And as I said, if you think of other questions even after this evening, please don't hesitate to send them to us, and, and we'll get them answered for you.
All right. Well, if there are no further questions at this time, Father Tony, if we could conclude with a prayer, and then everyone can move on with their evenings.
Sure, absolutely. So I'm going to delegate to my associate pastor. I believe he's on here. So, yes, there he is. Father Weber closes out.
I was ready, waiting, ready to go. In the name of Father and Son, the Holy Spirit, amen. Promote all our actions with prayer, Lord, and further them with your constant help, so that all we do may begin from you and by be brought up to completion. Through our Lord Jesus Christ, your Son, who lives and reigns with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit, God forever and ever. Amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Well, thank you, everyone, for joining us, for taking part of your evening now to, to hear this. Well, thank everyone for joining us, uh, for taking part of your evening out to, to hear this information. Uh, it's really appreciated.
Yes, thank you so much.